I'd like to call this meeting over. Meeting order and the first order of tonight's business, the twenty minutes.
I'd like to take this to my right. The United States murder. And with the Republic, what is that? One nation under God, if we live for the justice of our.
First order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Has everybody had a chance to check over the meeting and regular council meeting? Any additions, deletions, anything? Get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To approve the list of claims from July 2019. Everybody have a chance to look at them or do any questions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To accept the financial statements for the general water sewer funds for July 31st, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Get a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I want to make a little note on that. If you paid attention to the water fund, we are gaining strongly on that now. Just want to break even point on that. So we've pulled out of the deficit now, so hopefully.
When can we have a handy pay breaks?
Well, we've got money set aside for the breaks, but.
More of a monthly thing.
It's a monthly billing. So anyway, we made great headway in the last, well, slow but sure, week. Anyway, moving on, resolution 2019-06, accepting donations to support Rainier Days. Whereas the city of Rainier holds an annual summer festival, Rainier Days, and whereas business providing monetary donations to support festivals, Ring Lake, what is RLB? RLB Incorporated, Eric Johnson donated $600 in memory of Carl Brown, and Rural Fire Protection also donated $500. And I'd like to give a personal thanks to those people. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Rainier that we accept the generous donations as part of Rainier Days.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. We're in motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'd also like to make a little note there. I want to thank Todd's Business. He donated the ingredients for the successful pancake feed that they had. I want to understand, it made about $900, just shy of $900. And that was donated by Todd's Business, so thank you goes out to Todd for that too. And Wilbur did a bunch of work on it, I'm sure other people, but appreciate the effort. Another successful venture, so thanks again on that. Now we'll sign this too. Moving on, to accept the July 2019 liquor store operating statement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, I think for the audience, information made a little over $8,000 clear last month, so that was a very good month for us. Things are turning around here, and it's working really good, so she's doing a great job for us. Building street grounds, Cassaw 20, Screw Street, Todd?
I don't know, it's like a couple of weeks ago, Bob and I went to the Cochrane County Council Board members, and they've approved and moved forward with the parking that they talked about in front of Looney's, and then a little bit in front of Paul Beck's and stuff. And then we had a pretty long discussion about the four-way stop that we had talked about, and the county's going to go ahead and put in a resolution to the state, because the state is in charge of that, but they figure that it's probably something that none of them will get four-way stop. They said the only way we would get it is if there was traffic count or somebody gets hurt. So before they'll donate, somebody's going to get hurt. I still think we should try, if not else, we should still try to push for speed bumps or something, because today, one of the vans that delivered people to CN went by my house and not kidding you, went 70 miles an hour.
Really? How about the painting too? Did they talk about crosswalk on the painting?
Yeah, they do that. They do them in series of areas, and we just weren't on that agenda early in the year. But yeah, it was kind of, just because it's a county road, it's still up to the state to put up the stop signs. So they're going to write up a resolution and try to do it.
Well, you know, we have this, it's coming up right here, the next, on the next agenda, the next item on the agenda is the Min.ARDC transportation plan. And that's exactly the items, things are like that, how to control the speed coming into some of these state highways, implications that, that's what they address.
If we could do that, we should probably put in there for our area that we have the park right there, we have the bike trail, we have the cross, if we can get to the park.
Well, I think, I think that's exactly what, you know, that, I guess, it kind of incorporated into that plan, and they're going to be coming here, and we want to make sure that we can give our input, not just for this area, but anything else along this Highway 11 corridor that we can see that may have any influence on the traffic or how the traffic is controlled here. I know a suggestion, I want to be a light on the other, east side, had the bridge, maybe where people were on that, so. Okay, well, and they are going to head with the parallel parking.
They said once they get it finalized, they would come to our meeting, you know, if there's any changes that had to be made or they approve them.
I know they only had like 26 spaces, didn't we have more than that on the new one? You know, I had talked to the assistant engineer there, is it Haspar?
Yeah.
And, and I know.
Trent Nicholson.
Or Nicholson, Nicholson, yeah, I'm sorry, Nicholson and Trent. And on the, on the drawing you see was the area in front of Paul Beck's, and was that discussed? Because if there was three or four extra there, because I know we had discussed that and some issues. So when they get right down to it, we'll, I guess they'll let it in, you know, if we could shorten up the radiuses of some of them, we may squeeze another one or two, but 26 areas, just on that short little stretch, is probably a lot of good improvement parking, so.
That was good, and we found every job by all the businesses, the people, so I think it's going to be a go.
Yeah. We, I encouraged him too to try to let the contract as soon as possible. I know he has about a timeframe, he has to submit the plans to the state, to the state for approval, and then there's a waiting period of approval, and then there's an appetite period, and then there's the actual bid award, and then the construction after that. But it would be nice, I encouraged him to try to get it going this year, even if the completion date's next year, he could get, you know, concrete work done, because you can do concrete work late in fall, and get the curb and gutters in, and get the sidewalks in and stuff. And if they have a little blacktop patching between the curb and gutter and the existing blacktop and like that, that could be completed next year, so. I hope, hopefully, we can go ahead with that and move forward with it yet this year, so wait to be seen, I guess, so. Okay. And the next, I guess, we've covered is the Min.ARDC transportation plan, and we'll need a motion on that, there was 25, they requested $2,500 from the city. It's a private engineering firm that is contracted to the state of Minnesota to assess some of the issues along the highway that can be incorporated into the master traffic plan that the state has going, so I think there's some, like I said, just the issue like you just had, that's a perfect example. Another one, you know, probably should need a light on the east side of the thing so that people are aware of the, you know, the train, and it goes all over the lake, so anything, you know, lighting, you know, some of these intersections, things like that, and we brought that up, you know, and we got resolution on Chapel Lane, but that was part of this project. So, or drainage issues that causing, you know, causing us any problems or other people. So, so I think that's worthwhile venture, so I'm glad you guys approved that, and can we?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next order of business, it would be the hockey boards. I've received three quotes, as you know, the city, the school district had donated the International Falls Bronco Boards to us there, and, you know, the rec hockey has donated some money to erect these boards and everything, so I went out and solicited some quotes and received three quotes for the, for the project, and right now, L&amp;L Construction is low for the project, and I think we should move ahead with that. And I'd make a motion for, I would recommend that we accept their bid for it, it's around $20,000. We have three bids, the highest one was $56,000, but that included setting the glass, so there isn't quite that much difference, but they were, if they would have set all the glass on the ends and everything, it'd be like $22,000, and the high bid was $56,000, there was one right around $40,000, $40 some thousand, so.
Have they done it before?
Oh yeah, they did concrete work before, they're doing a lot of concrete work.
Are we just as far as setting up the rings?
You know, I doubt that they're setting ring boards up, so, but obviously you'll have to watch them, I mean, pay attention, so. See, the boards are unfit, it's how they encourage them to do that, and they're putting a two-foot, the specs are the same as a two-foot wide footing, one foot thick, tacked with, put a little gravel underneath, and mold the boards out of, and backfill it, so it's pretty cut and dried. And then we have an option, if we want to put glass on top too, whether we decide to do that or not, but we can put it on the ends, or you can put it full width, you know, I think we've got the glass, we have, except the layers, boards, I think there's even glass behind them, if I remember right.
Yeah, we took it all.
It depends on how, how you want to do it. I think glass on the end may be fine, you know, save a lot of bucks, but.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, on the ends would be about the best, because I can remember when we were kids shoveling it off, it's going to be pretty hard to shovel, that's snow.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to do that. I think, yeah, we need the sides open, because we wouldn't have no way of, well, we'd have to push it and somebody.
There's wire there now, right?
What was that?
Mesh back there now, right?
Yeah, there's something back there.
There's steel mesh.
Chicken wire. I think, I contacted Buddy and the other fellow this morning, or was it yesterday morning, that we probably start working getting the boards down, so that, you know, so that's one of the projects, sewer and water crew or the street crew.
This will be the same size we got there now?
You know, it'll be the size of the boards we're in Bronco Arena, whatever, whatever distance, I think it's really close.
It'll be a regulation size.
It's real close. Whatever was at Bronco Arena is what it'll be, I'm sure it'll be a 42 difference somewhere, but I don't, I don't know, I don't think it'll be a drastic change one way or another.
Yes, so hope that you got from the moment, did that include taking down the boards? Because I believe the biggest.
Excuse me, what was that?
Did the code from the lowest bid include taking down the old boards? Because I believe the highest bid did include that.
I have the code of the high bid right there, and, no, the high bid was only to remove existing, existing rank, so it didn't include it. This one didn't include either, low bid, not included removing the boards. And I don't think that's going to be that big a deal there.
Well, that's.
I think Buddy and him, so.
I can come up to him.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's going to take that long, so it's just hard what we can do, so.
The only bad thing is they're much longer, I don't know how much room there is from, this would be on the west, east, west side, towards Headlands, if there's that much room between the rock and the boards now.
Well, we can, we can set that in first, Bob, we dig that out, set that in first, and we can go, go east, and if there's not enough, you know, leave one section out, I think they're four foot, if I remember, I think about four foot sections, but, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but I think if we start on the east end, like you said, or the west end, where the rock is, or close to it, get that first, and then just work your way east, so hopefully it'll work. I'm sure it will, I mean, we can adjust it if we have to, just leave one board out if we have to, or lengthen it going east.
We have funds in our general fund that have been allocated to the boards too, and I think it's like, I want to say it's close to $10,000.
Okay, that'll help.
When I was starting.
I think, didn't we apply for $5,000?
The rep was, that was something the rep was going to do.
Okay.
The grant, but they were waiting on the quotes.
We couldn't write air, quote, for whatever, like, for that, so yes, we will be ready.
So we do have the quote, and if you want to write the grant and take it to the state CP, so appreciate it.
So you just have to get me a quote and a bit for it?
Yeah, he was supposed to deliver, I think he might have delivered to our office, I didn't have time, I got late tonight, so I told him make sure you bring it in so I could get it, that's where the other two were, so I looked at them. Okay, that's it. Oh, we've got it, we got, well, we got a motion on transportation plan, so on hockey boards, we probably should get a motion on accepting the whole bid.
I'll make the one, and is that the whole bid on the hockey boards?
Second. We have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
I got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Is that time of year again, we're going to start thinking about the budget?
You got to think about the budget?
For next year's budget?
Wait, it's pretty much done, but I don't have the, we don't have the, the numbers from the county yet.
So probably October.
Usually we start in September after we get the numbers, then.
I just know it's going to be that time of year.
Yes.
And I do have a couple of things that I want to just let you know about, that the funding came through for us to do our pot model daycare down in Little Fork, so we are proceeding ahead with that, so if you know anybody who wants to become a provider, please get ahold of Renee Whitbeck and start getting the paperwork going. Also, we are planning a movie night for September, or movie day for September 2nd, and we have five movies scheduled for the family, and it's a free will donation, however, you do have to buy a pot, and pot party pizza will be sold during the movies, and they start at 10:30, 10:45 in the morning, and there's five movies set up. We have Ice Age 2, E.T., Harry Potter, The Muppets, and Mrs. Doubtfire, so it should be a great day for your kids, and there's five different movies to choose from, and it is free will offering, and that money goes to the childcare initiative, so it's wonderful, it will help buy supplies that are going to be needed and whatnot, so if you.
What is that joint, September 7th? September 7th?
You guys would fly ourselves, have a few beers?
We have some, it's on Facebook too. So it should be awesome, and.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
One thing I know we brought up at the meeting in the hall, that we're going to have a meeting concerning the boat landing, and if we get our agreement with the state, then we can get the agreement from the state, we'll get it signed, and then we'll get a, take it to the engineers and get a preliminary plans, and once we get that handled, then we'll see what the timeframe is to get some of that handled, so then we can have a meeting with the information, otherwise it's, what we're going to do, this will be actual, we'll be able to look at something, so. Once we get those, that agreement in hand, we'll contact the engineers and then proceed with the, with the drawing and some regulations, so.
I just wanted, for Rainier Rescome, we would like to agree, Todd and sort of smash the first donation for the pancake breakfast feed and help to my local capital. They, $901 was a positive, we're a gentleman from that, I think it's the largest donation we've ever had to make a pancake feed, and we also, Tammy came, I wish she was here, because she does an amazing job for our corner, we had a record number of kids, we do research about it, we know how many 138 kids go through our grab card on Saturday, so.
Yeah, I think it's probably our most successful Rainier Days since I've been involved, because the weather was great, and it's just getting a little more every year, and the parade was well attended, so it's good, I'm glad. Yes, Bob?
Two things. One is the playground, I think that when they did the job, they didn't do the right job, you go down there, you see the weeds going right through the chips, and it should have been all the chips, you only talked to Silver, we're going to take like old chips out, which was not done, we're going to put new fabric down, which was not done, and new chips were ripped over the old chips, and I think that the crew should spend the day and get that done right. I mean, the park was all used, and I think it's a safety thing, you know, to go down there, now we have two piles of chips.
You got what?
Well, you got the old chips, you got the new chips, so it's deeper now, it's wet, it's longer to dry out.
Well, I think, I think Bob, what we're going to probably do, and I haven't thought too much about the remedies on this, one, we can probably spray it for any weeds we have this year, but next spring, we're going to, because these chips will weather out, and then maybe next spring, we either remove the existing chips and put fabric down, basically this should be an annual deal, because the fresh chips, when you drive by, in the distance, it looks great, so I think we should, every year, we should be putting, add new chips in, every, you know, first of May or May 15th, and I think, texture for sure, we have to put new fabric down, remove the old, put new fabric down, I don't think it'll be necessary to remove the fabric on an annual basis, but.
No, no.
You know, I mean, just get, get the other stuff off, and you get the bottom off, and you just have to shovel them off.
If you buy a good fabric, it will be good for five, six years.
Oh, more than that, it is, you know, that, that geotextile that they put under the highways, I was.
But you have, all you want to do down there, put kicks and chips away, and you'll see it all.
No, I totally did that, I understand that, I think for the remainder of the year, we only have, a couple of weeks of school, so we have a few minutes left, you know, before.
I just don't know why we didn't do a good job.
I don't think it was communicated, the people that did it, the other guy wasn't there, he should have communicated how we want it done, because we did communicate that at the, at the board meeting here, and I don't think Nick gave it to Buddy and.
Bill.
No, Bill.
Bill.
Bill, and, but anyways.
Bud's here.
What's that?
Said Bud's here.
I didn't.
Buddy's here.
Yeah, no, Buddy's here now, but I, I don't think he was communicated on how we wanted it done, because, like I said, we should put new fabric under it and do that, so next spring when we do that, and I think we'll just set a, you know, preliminary date, May 15th or something like that, remove everything, put new fabric down, and install new chips, and I think every year we have, even freshen them up anyway, because I know they look, look pretty nice when they're fresh.
One other thing, never granted calling, and you said there was a lot of water yesterday or last, today, running to the yard, you just wondered if you were going to put piping to the yard or to stay the same, or?
We were going to basically keep it the same, well, that'll be a council decision. I had Everett offered us easement, now I'll explain this, Everett offered us easement to run an additional drainage pipe on the west side of his driveway, basically west side of his house, almost on his property, right between.
Rasmus.
Him and Rasmus, since there's a kind of holding pond there, and then it goes through it, about a 10-inch pipe under his driveway, and enters into a 15-inch pipe that goes through Dale Johnson's yard. We could, there's a couple of options, we could have put a bigger pipe, like a 15-inch pipe, under his driveway, which would mean cutting his driveway, saw a 15-inch pipe under his driveway, that would alleviate a lot of water, there's a lot of difference wrong between a 12-inch and a 15, it's not more, it ain't like a 3-inch, the diameter is huge difference. But Everett said that easiest it would be to run a, it was about 180 feet, I went over there and looked at it a couple of days, and run it directly to Sad Bay from that hole, so you wouldn't have to cut his driveway or anything, that was, that was his idea, I thought it was a great idea, but then I think he wanted $22,000 easement, and, you know, I didn't bring it to the council, because first of all, I told them we weren't going to do anything until we see if this could handle it, and then what our options would be, one would be, you know, you could install 15-inch covert under his yard, and we could do that, it's just, it's only a 12-foot chunk of driveway, cut it out, put a new one in, blacktop, but that would probably be the, by far the cheapest, and I think that would eliminate, you know, the difference in diameter of, you know, is substantial, so we could do that, and I think that's the most we should do right now, because, you know, we've had torrential rains here, the one time we had it, we had, what they said, 150-year rain here, I know they were canoeing in front of the county corridors there, so, you know, you're going to get one of those, no matter what, right, I don't need to prepare for something.
Yeah, I drove down the road early in the morning, the ditch was all good, there wasn't water, and then around here, it was property, the rest of it was good.
Yeah, well, they're not quite done, Duane, I talked to Duane today, he's going to finish the project, he would have finished it today, but he's going to finish it up tomorrow, Duane Show, who's the, he's the restoration contractor for both of them, so he's going to finish it up, starting again tomorrow, the rain has set him back a bit too, so I think that job will be complete within the next day or two, then the grass will be seeded and stuff.
Let's take, settle down and see how it works.
Yeah, that rain that we got, if it settles in, it, you know, it looks like it's a good job, I mean, it ain't quite done yet, but it's getting there. They did a great job, I think, so. It took, it took long enough, but it looks good.
Once he turns green.
Anything else? John?
Yeah, as far as this traffic coming, how we wrote the one, with speed and whatever, it sounds like they've got very handy, but, how about signage, would, any signage has to be approved by them as well?
Yeah.
How about, like a sign that says, motors shall stop or necessary in crosswalk?
Maybe, maybe they're giving those ones a call.
Well, I think that's mandatory, if somebody in a crosswalk, motor.
Take it to the car.
Yeah, they don't.
I, I know the sign says, all we have to have is one on the way in, I think.
If you have a pedestrian, if you have a pedestrian crosswalk sign, someone's in it, and they drive through that while there's somebody in that crosswalk, they.
I think that's safe action.
Oh, it is, it is, that's what I'm saying, I don't think you'd need any more signage, we may need the sheriff to force that.
Well, I looked at those, when I bought our other signs that we stuck in the middle of the street that they ran over, that, I look at the ones that they have in the falls on their streets, they're $184 a pop for that, those signs that run right down the middle by Smoky Bear there, when there's somebody in the crosswalk, your state law, you stop. The law when I had out here, they ran over both of them.
They did?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we had the last.
Well, it's not our, it's not our highway, the county.
No, but we can't put, as a city, we can't put it set there.
What's that?
I think as a city, I think we can't put it, because I did in my.
Well, I can believe you can, because the city don't own Highway 53, and they have signs on that too, but.
Well, does, does the state allow us to pick where our crosswalks are going to be, or do they?
I think that's the county one.
Yeah, I'm not sure the places that they should be.
Right, yeah, this is, it wouldn't be a, I shouldn't comment on it, because I'm sure, I know this is a state aid, or county stadium. I know this is a state aid, county state aid, the first people we go to is the county, but the state does have.
Finals.
Private, proprietary rights over.
I just don't want, I just don't like the aspect that they're not going to do nothing until somebody gets hurt. I don't want some kind of little kid running across the play and getting hit by somebody coming down there 50, 60 miles an hour.
Yeah, when I go for my walk, I sit there and it was just all red light.
Oh, yeah. The question is, do we have pedestrian, do we have pedestrian crossing sign there?
No.
Okay, can we request from the county a pedestrian crossing sign at?
I know we have one that says.
At the park.
Children's plan, yeah, but I don't think there's a.
Two, it would be two on both sides of the park for sure.
Yeah, where you put some language.
And I don't care if you put slow, children at play or whatever it is, but pedestrian crossing.
Should stop, man.
You know, at school zones, do they have to request it, you know, like school zones, we got a 30 mile an hour zone, I guess, in here, but at school zones, they change that bit. Maybe you could require, inquire if we could request a, you know, well, you know, I was going to say 20 mile an hour zone or something, but.
You have to go through a traffic, it's a whole traffic study and all sorts of things and so.
They started with.
We can, we can, we can, we can request tra, pedestrian signs, we can request pedestrian sign and, 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 and strike.
At least there were pedestrian signs.
We used to have a sign out there.
Right.
Yeah, Wilbur said it got ran over.
Both of them?
Both of them, I had one over there by Williams and one over here, slow down, I mean, random both of them.
Okay, and anything else?
I have here copies of petitions signed in opposition to a boat launch on the river and in support of a hearing, so all of these copies will.
Just leave it, yeah.
For over 125 statements.
Did you hear me, what I said about that, until we get a signed agreement and then we can contract an engineer to give us some preliminary drawings, otherwise, you know, again, it's just rhetoric until then.
I show petitions there.
All right.
I also did speak with the DNR and they reported that the boat launch that's down by Brother Down on the river is the least used boat launch of any at all.
Yeah.
And they reported that, they said that a river boat launch out here would be considered quote hazardous, okay?
Cool, what?
And they also, they believe that a boat launch on the river, but someone, would be quote hazardous, okay? This is direct from the DNR.
Okay, you know, why don't we just save all that for the hearing or not hearing, the meeting, because we've talked about this, you know, and I know you've got some of that information, I appreciate it, but it's, we just keep chewing the same stuff every meeting, that's why we want to have a meeting about it, so that's fine. Leave the petition, we'll air all this stuff at the meeting, you know, I've been, I've been in conversation with this, basically on a weekly basis with DNR on different issues on this, so we'll just bring that up at the meeting. I'm not cutting you short, Sue, we're going to have a meeting on this and I think that's the correct time.
And you don't have any time, any idea what that meeting might be?
We have to get the agreement back from the DNR and then after that, we'll contact the engineer to draw plans and draw some plans up to what it might look like, because John was requesting them, and other people want to see what it looks like so they know what they're talking about.
Okay, so when you draw the plans, then is that ultimately $200,000?
What's that?
Does the money to draw the plans by an engineer, is that included in the $200,000 or does that come out of?
It'll come out of the $200,000, yeah, yeah, it'll be part, engineering is for construction, whether it's engineering and construction, that's, that's what we have, that's what the groundwork is for and whether we spend it, we're not going to spend that much on it. On the preliminary drawings, it's just preliminary drawings, you know, just so we have a really pretty good idea what it's going to look like or could look like. We're not going to spend an extensive amount of engineering right away because it could be a waste of money.
Just one last question, was there ever consideration given to putting this boat launch down by the city beach in the regular city park?
You know, we, we looked at, we don't own any property there that we could access the thing and I don't think we could, I wouldn't waste my time requesting to put a boat landing on somebody else's property on their city beach when, when you see the resistance we had trying to put a boat launch at our beach, you know, so I think that was a, it was a thought, but it wasn't a very good one. That's my own opinion, because if, if we weren't going to put a boat landing on our beach, why the heck would anybody want one on their beach? I mean, just think about it.
Well, their beach is about four times as big.
And they have more than four times the people on it, you know what I mean? You go down there.
Hardly anybody shows up at that beach.
Well, I didn't request it because I, I talked to enough, a couple of councilmen just on the side about it and I wasn't going to go to a public council meeting and request that, because they said, I wouldn't waste your time coming to a council meeting, they told me how they thought of it, so. Anyway, anything else?
What's that, are we going to get those petitions or not?
Yeah, we can, she can. And we'll keep you notified when we get the information. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.